And Mike, can we stand? Denise, you can go first.
We'll do it when it comes in.
Raise your right hand and read the oath.
I Denise Theory do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee on the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019, according to the best of my ability.
I Michael Zagorski do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee on the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019, according to the best of my ability.
So I can...
Thank you.
Just looking at my glasses, I'm glad you did a big print.
Yes, so if you could raise your right hand, please, Mr. Duffy and my side.
Destroy the house. I Daniel Duffy do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Trustee of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District, this day July 1st, 2016 through June 30th, 2019, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you. May I please have a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss confidential matters pertaining to the employment and future employment of particular persons and legal matters?
So move, second.
All in favor? We're now in the executive session. So thank you. Motion to return to regular session, please?
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? At this time, I will accept nominations for Board President.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Heeter. Wonderful job over the last few years, and I'd like to see him continue.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate myself.
Any other nominations? You have a motion to close nominations, please?
Second.
So the board members vote by paper ballot. Everyone has paper ballots in front of you. The blue ones are for President. If you could please just write the name of who you would like to vote for and pass it to me. So the following voted for Mr. Heeter, Mr. Duffy, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Heeter, and Mr. Zagorski. And the following board members voted for Mr. Minemeier, Ms. Theory, Mr. Minemeier, and Mr. Sheldon. Mr. Heeter has received the most votes, so congratulations, Mr. Heeter.
Congratulations, Doug.
Majorate, please.
Hi, Dr. Heeter, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of President of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for 2016-2017 school year, according to the best of my ability.
At this time, may I have nominations for Vice President, please? I would like to start off, I would like to nominate Mr. Duffy. Keep us together here.
I'd like to nominate, uh, Mr. Minemeier.
Any other nomination? I guess I should have a motion to all of them. That doesn't matter, okay. At this time, I believe you have the other chief. Oh. You have a motion to close nominations, sorry.
So move, second.
Any discussion in favor?
And the results. The following board members voted for Mr. Duffy, Mr. Duffy and Mr. Heeter, and for Mr. Minemeier, Ms. Theory, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Minemeier, Mr. Perry, Mr. Sheldon, and Mr. Zagorski. Congratulations to Mr. Minemeier.
Congratulations.
I Stephen Minemeier do solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Vice President of the Board of Education of the Hyde Park Central School District for the 2016-17 school year, according to the best of my ability.
This is the number six. We have a motion for 601, the Department of Student Board member.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that with James? He's sitting with us. All in favor?
Location two.
Once again, proving no good deed, chosen punished. Did it hurt to the camera, did it?
Nothing important.
Nice guy.
There are no agenda modifications, but I have a motion to adopt tonight's agenda, please.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you. Camera motion for 8.01, consent agenda, please.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that? Oh yeah, the, sorry. Barbara was being pointed at as pressure time. Congratulations, and welcome to the board. I know you can do the job because you did it for us on a temporary basis, so welcome again. So all in favor? Close. A quick comment here. The vote's been conducted and finished, correct? So the dates of Board of Ed meetings, would it be possible for the clerk... Pardon me, let me back up. I manage my life through Google Calendars, and I was hoping that if there's other members of the board that would find it useful, we could have a calendar entry for each public Board of Ed meeting to organize that.
Yes, if I would find it useful.
Would that be too much of a burden for the clerk to...
Like calendar invitation to the board?
Yeah, for every, you know, maybe 30 days in advance. I can save them from the district calendar.
So an invite or a reminder? Or both?
Either. Just something that comes to my calendar, is on my calendar, so that I'm... Aren't you linked to the district calendar? There somewhere? I'm not linked. I don't have my, not my normal view of my Google Calendar. If it's possible, I'll link to the...
I can do the calendar invite, and then it will send a reminder automatically, but it'll also either put the entire year of meetings.
Good. As long as it's not too much of a burden, I don't want to... Thank you.
Is there anyone that doesn't want to?
At this time, we'll have these are...
Oh, you should have asked him to get here. I Deborah Rosen do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk for the Board of Education for the 2016-17 school year, according to the best of my ability.
Okay. Get your arms ready. Have a motion for 10.1, rule of new...
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you. And I have a motion for 10.02, barring resolution as stated in the agenda.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that?
And this is a roll call vote? Ms. Theory?
I agree.
Okay, Mr. Danielson?
Aye.
Mr. Duffy?
Aye.
Mr. Heeter?
Aye.
Mr. Minemeier?
Aye.
Mr. Sheldon?
See, I'm not the last one to vote anymore.
Mr. Zagorski? Thank you.
Was that a D or an E?
Motion fair.
Have a motion for 10.03, trump the conditions of employment or confidential managerial.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor?
Quick questions? Can I abstain from this vote since I have a family member on that group?
Technically, you don't have to.
Doesn't have to.
You don't have to, you can if you want.
All right, I'll go as I can.
Then would you not require to go stand?
Do you think so?
I have a motion for 10.04, designation of board member to serve on District Leadership Team. Last two, that was Jeff, that was you?
Yep.
You want to keep going with it?
Yep.
Perry and Doug and Jeff originally.
Oh, okay, this is the...
The district.
Strategy fight, got different names. Yes, I will continue on that.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll say, hopefully my schedule didn't help very good actually, but... Your schedule as a retired... As a retired person. And business. All right, can I have a motion to designate the three board members?
So move, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Thank you. I have a motion for 10.5, the board members to serve on the Audit Committee. Last year with Mr. Duffy, myself, and Mr. Sheehan. I'd like to say...
I'd also like to say.
Does anybody else like to join us? Kevin is coming back at the community event, so I can stay on that.
Can I ask a question about how up, like what it entails?
Sure. We need to do things like talk to the internal auditor, give him instructions on what we'd like to see him look at. We also recommend who to hire to the Board for acquisition, and we recommend who to hire for the external auditors. It needs everybody.
Right. That would have to be...
Okay. I have a motion to have both three board members on the...
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. I have this 10.06, board members serve on the Policy Committee. That was myself and Mr. McGrath, who's on around the board. That's just me and myself. I will continue to do that. Anybody else want to be on that? If we can find a meeting time that would fit into my schedule, I would like to serve in that capacity. Okay, we can see that it's, it'll be a... Mr. McGrath and I are both retired, so we were meeting at like 9:30 in the morning, so... Yeah, if we can be, like, free, free. I doubt it. First thing in the morning, what, retired?
Well, depending on time, I would get a policy if it's possible.
In most cases, we have staff at the need. That's why we pick three, because everybody out of school. Early in the morning would not fit the staff. Okay. Yeah, I've got a busy work year coming up, so 3 o'clock in the afternoon is... I still plan to be part of the technology stuff today, so if I have to interrupt my schedule for that, I'm pretty sure I will have to, but I better not be in the Audit Committee. All right, I'm a part of the policy. So Denise and I, can I have a motion for the two of us to be on the policy?
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you.
Sure.
Board members serve on the Energy Commission Committee, Advisory Subcommittee rather. That was Mr. McGrath, Mr. Sheehan, and Mr. Sheldon. I will continue to serve if I can do that. Anybody else have a desire for energy? How often do they need? When do they need?
I think we're going to be quarterly next year. And there's no said number of board members on committee, by the way. I mean, we're filling them up, but we try to meet quarterly. It's generally late at year end. It's like 5:30-ish. Well, you're in there going around.
Yeah, I'm gonna say 4:00, 4:30.
Oh, okay.
If it's only quarterly, then I can be part of it.
There is a limit, in the sense, just to comment, that we can have no more than three board members on a committee, otherwise it has to be as fine as a meeting of the Board of Education.
Okay, so I have a motion for Mr. Sheldon and Mr. Minemeier.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you. 10.8, designate board member to serve on the Comprehensive Health Advisory Committee. Last year that was Mr. Danielson.
What is that one?
Uh, yep.
I was trying to ask, he was right next to you.
It's kind of like the district-wide wellness committee. So often there's phys ed teachers, health teachers. I'm on that committee. It meets four times a year, every other month. So we look at curriculum, we look at nutrition.
Okay, this is Zagorski. I have a motion for those two members to be on the Health Advisor.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. And I have a motion to, for 10.09, board member for the Dutchland County School Board Association, sorry. Mr. Sheldon, you were last year, you want to say anything?
I will continue unless someone else feels it like the experience.
It is worthwhile, I did it for a couple of years.
I do also.
Yeah, but it does...
Give you a picture of what's on your calendar.
One of the new board members that's fine. You get a chance to learn what they're doing in other districts, which is the most, you know, helpful, and plus at the state level, right?
It's, yeah, and it's the first Thursday of every month. Meeting typically starts, typically, meeting typically starts at 7:00 a.m. and you're usually out there by 9:30-ish. Sound excited?
Did this your beer?
I just, I just don't have to do this today's time.
And I'm willing to continue, and members are welcome to attend. It doesn't have to be...
You can go without being on the committee.
Yeah, yeah, so you can get the experience without the cost.
Okay. I have a motion to continue Mr. Sheldon on the committee.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Close, thank you. And a motion for 10.10, designate board members to serve on the... I believe that's the President and the Vice President. I have a motion for the board members to be...
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? And close, thank you. I have a motion for 10.11, board members serve on the District Negotiation Team. Last year, Mr. Danielson, myself, and Mr. Sheldon. I'd like to continue. I'd love to be there.
I'd like to continue.
I will step aside, use my phone. Okay. I have a motion for the board members, Mr. Danielson, Mr. Heeter, and Mr. Minemeier.
So move, second.
Any discussion on that? All in favor? Close, thank you. 10.12, designate board members to serve on the Personnel Committee. Last year that was Mr. Danielson, myself, and Mr. Sheehan. I'd like to stay on that. I think that's an excellent subcommittee for a new board member to sit on. Just leaving it open. Yeah, those are not like meetings that are held on a regular basis. They're held at a necessary...
And with calendar coordination for your availability. And it's generally evening, you know, late, late afternoon, early evening. You're talking about personnel.
4:30. 4:30, it's 5:30 now, in that way. If neither, then would I, I'd like to get back on it. Okay. Well, that's still the two members, right?
My two, I struggle with that.
So...
Really, if you want, you two want to...
I can sell to that.
So Denise, you want to be on?
Sure.
So Jeff, you're...
Three minutes.
Okay, so it's going to be Denise, myself, and Dan. Can I have a motion for that, please?
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you. I have a motion for 10:13, board members to serve on the Special Education Subcommittee. That was Mr. Danielson and Mr. Duffy last year.
I'd like to stay on.
Dan?
I'll stay on.
Okay. Anybody else? I have a motion for those two members, please.
So move, second.
And all in favor? Close. Motion for 10.14, designate board members to serve on the Technology Committee. Last year, that was Mr. Duffy, myself, and Mr. Minemeier. I actually like to step down from that and give somebody else a chance. I don't want to go to the end. I feel like, yeah, you might. So...
I'd like to continue.
I'd like to step down.
Okay. So right now, we have Mr. Zagorski and Mr. Minemeier. Anybody else want to be on that? I can come on when I can get there, but I'll just do that.
Yeah, you don't have to be.
I have a motion for those two board members, please.
So move, second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Close, thank you. Okay, we're actually going to start the regular meeting. First, the monkey proceed. So let's start with trial. I think we have any trial. We have some good programs going.
Yeah.
I was down at trial, but I'm there.
James, do you have anything?
Oh, no.
Okay. It is summertime, so that's fine. I have a couple that just came to her attention. We got a really neat email greetings from Iceland. Depp Crabchuck, our science teacher, took, is, she might still be there. Well, no, they're back by now. Six students with her... Six students with her to Iceland. Not, not a school trip, but definitely our students with our teacher, you know, through an agency. Olivia Babcock, Elizabeth Phillips, Jordan Malloy, Amanda, Tito, and Thomas Mareska. And we got some really neat pictures of our students in Iceland. So there are several others travel trips that go out, but it's nice when they send pictures and connect it to their science learning with their science teachers, which is nice to see. The Hyde Park Rotary sent a thank you email to Elliot, myself, and the Hyde Park Central School District. They had a float in the Fourth of July Parade. And John Vanderly is also a Rotarian, and he represents the New York State Theater Organ Society. And because of their ability to house their organ supplies and, you know, they have some space over in Hyde Park Elementary, it's one of the things that makes the New York State Theater Organ possible, program possible for our students. We have the digital theater organ at our high school. And so they sent pictures of the Rotary float with the organ on it. And as I said, they won third place, so that was a nice piece of news. Linsky Lundey got some great press. For those of you who were at graduation, you may recall that Linsky graduated high school with also a, an associate's degree from Duchess Community College, and he's also currently an EMT. So prior to graduating high school, he satisfied the hundred and fifty hours to become a certified EMT, got a two-years associate's degree, and the Duchess News did a nice feature article on him. And he's standing next to Dan Hurley, our school psychologist at FDR, who's also an EMT for the volunteer ambulance corps. So just a nice shout out to Linsky for all of his accomplishments. We recognized him at graduation, and it was nice to see him get some crap.
And I did a calculation, and somehow he's working on a thirty-hour clock today.
Yeah. So Doug mentioned some summer programs. We can mention it in Pride, and I have some specifics under Superintendent's Report, so we can blend them all together.
Lundway?
I did go down to Violet Avenue. It's unfortunate, I was there on a nice cool day. It was hot last week. A lot of good stuff was going on. Very hands-on, interactive with the students. I was very impressed with what they did. They had a nice reading session, too, when they got that. Very, very well done. And you should mention approval plan.
So kind of moving right into Superintendent's Report, Pride all combined, it's a little bit about... Our summer food service program is going on at Violet Avenue. It includes all of our students who are there for summer bridge and extended school year. And in addition to that, the program is open a half hour before students arrive and a half hour after students leave for all community members, students who wish to come there and get either a breakfast or lunch. So the breakfast program, we have, you know, somewhere between eight to ten on some days, but not all. And the lunch program, we have anywhere from ten to twenty students eighteen years or younger coming in. And we're excited to have the program. It's funded by the government. We're trying to get the word out. There's been a posting on Facebook. We're gonna see if we can get some free radio advertisement, just to make sure that, you know, the community knows that students eighteen years and younger can come.
Can I say a few things?
Jerkass, look.
It's not open just to our students, it's open to anybody that's eighteen or under. We serve breakfast Monday through Friday from eight until eight-thirty, and lunch from twelve-thirty until one. And it's totally free for anyone that's eighteen or under, where that Violet Avenue.
And it's fully funded.
It's fully funded, yes.
And Tony Monticello is working there to help keep everybody in unlocation. The food looks very good. I was there when they were slicing up fresh oranges, fresh romaine lettuce, making grilled chicken for grilled chicken romaine lettuce wrap. So it's a, it's a good program, and we're gonna continue to get the word out. And it is the first year, and it's not really a walkable community, so we're just seeing how, seeing how we can increase participation. And again, the summer program at Violet Avenue, we've got close to two hundred students there on a daily basis, all bussing in, and it's just... They come in with smiles on, so it's just heartwarming. So if anybody needs a kid fix, a little kid fix, they can go to the elementary school at Violet Avenue. At the high school, new this year is, for the first time, we're doing a regional summer school. Last year we did our own high school summer school. There was some interest in the county to have a regional summer school. And then it becomes under the auspices of Duchess County BOCES to administer the program and run the program. Certainly, a lot of our people are hired. Lynette Williams, our ten-month AP, is the principal for the program. And there are eight, there are administrators there for BOCES every day. I've been up at least three times, and the students have blended really well together. So we, there are students attending the actual summer program. There are a hundred and ninety-four students, and of that make up a hundred and twenty-eight are from Hyde Park, thirty-four students are from Pine Plains, thirty, twenty-five are from Red Hook, and seven are from Rhinebeck. So the actual school program is a collaboration of four districts. As for the summer regions, where students can just walk in and take the region's exam, we anticipate approximately four hundred and eighteen region's exams being taken by students, and some students take multiple exams, and we will have kind of polling students join us for region's exams. None, no students are polling or attending the program. But I have been very impressed by the fact that this is a new regional program. The opening was very smooth. You have the usual bus timing issues first day, you have people coming all the way from Pine Plains and Red Hook, and, but it has been a wonderful blending of four high schools coming together. You walk through the halls, we have some of our own teachers. We have a teacher from Catskill, we have teachers from Rhinebeck. So there are new faces in the teaching staff, new students, and it's been really well-run and organized. So as far as something that was implemented for the first year, I think it's, it's off to a very good, successful start. So that's it for Superintendent's Report. And then we do have, under Superintendent's Report, the new organizational chart. I just wanted to put up there. You'll see later on on the personnel agenda, we are... We have reorganized our central office. And basically, we went through a process that lasted about a month and a half, maybe a little bit more, when Cora Stempel announced that she was leaving the district to go take a job as deputy superintendent for Duchess BOCES. One of the things that actually is written right into my contract is to oversee the organization and the reorganization of the administrative structure and make recommendations to the board accordingly. So we took some time, we had a central office position open. You take time to pause, reexamine the needs of the district, reexamine job descriptions, lines of duty, and see if we, if there's any cause or reason to change. After reviewing all of the job descriptions, multiple structures in other districts and other places, and our shrinking enrollment, which continues, you see that in a few minutes. As everyone knows, we're down over probably close to nine hundred students in ten to eleven years. We took a look at our organizational chart, and we realized that there was an opportunity to restructure. And it certainly is nothing about performance or what happened before, but can we work in a different way and reorganize? And after working with the remaining administrators in central office, Linda Steinberg, and Aviva Kafka, we came up with a plan that was very doable. So we have reorganized, as outlined on that chart. So my job is restructured. We have created a deputy superintendent position, and we've also restructured Linda's job. So that we took the assistant superintendent for curriculum, instruction, and personnel. We removed the personnel piece and put that under the superintendent. I will also take back technology. I've always pretty much had athletics. And certainly the supervision of the principals and supervision of the entire administrative team. The business manager, Linda, will take back facilities, which I had last year. Linda has been on the job in this capacity. She's certainly been with the district for a number of years and has proven to be highly effective and ready to take on the expanded role of the business manager to include food services, transportation facilities, as well as the business department. The deputy superintendent, again, we took away the personnel. Will oversee the entire instructional program, inclusive of special education and general education, as well as student services. The cost savings to the district is a minimum of a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars a year. We thought that the decreasing enrollment, the decreasing size of the district, the opportunity to reorganize in the, the job descriptions, we took all the job descriptions and realigned the duties. And that is the direction that we're moving in. We think it's fiscally responsible. We think it's very doable and manageable. And we feel that the district will continue to grow and thrive under this new management system.
Okay, that brings us to thirteen oh two, enrollment update. Dr. Richa?
Okay, so as per our policy, the Board of Education receives an enrollment update on an annual basis in one form or another. I wish I had different news, that's all I can say, but our enrollment continues to decline. This is a look at, if you see, the scale is from three thousand to forty-four hundred, just to, you know, so we're not working from zero, this is number of students. But in the fall of two thousand and eight, we were at, you know, above about forty-three hundred students. Actually, you know, there was a time when it was even much greater than that. We'll just start at fall two thousand and eight. You'll see that we were about forty-three hundred students, and right now we're at approximately thirty-six hundred students. I find this alarming. Certainly, in this period of time, we did close an elementary school. But the trend, two thousand and twelve is when we closed one elementary school, and the trend continues at a rate of decline. I wanna go back to that slide, one second. I can send this and actually add it to the presentation, I think does, is worth pointing out. But very specifically, I'll itemize the building declines from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen. And it is as follows. So the declining enrollment for Netherwood in the time period of two thousand and thirteen to the June of two thousand and sixteen to present day, they're down sixty-one students. North Park is down seven students. Ralph R. Smith is up fifty-one. Now, during that time period, two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and sixteen, we also consolidated our self-contained special education program. So part of the increase in Ralph R. Smith is twofold. They are experiencing a slight increase, but we've also consolidated a program there, and that also contributed to the increase. I will say that Ralph R. Smith is the only school that has a plus sign in enrollment in front of it. Violet Avenue School is down eighty-one students. Howland Middle School is down a hundred and fourteen students, and FDR is down thirty-three students. As you know, it's our enrollment coming in at the younger years, so you see a, a, a less of a decline at FDR right now. That'll start to catch up to FDR. So those are some pretty serious numbers when you're losing, you know, anywhere from, you know, fifty-one to a hundred and fourteen students per, in a building over a three-year period of time.
Over what time span was that again?
Two thousand and thirteen, two thousand and sixteen. So I will update this tomorrow, the presentation tomorrow, and then we'll repost it on the board agenda. Because I think it's worth seeing, one of the things when we looked at the enrollment study was rate of decline and where. And not that, it just is helpful to know what neighborhoods you might have some exodus out of. One of the interesting things about Violet Avenue that has a higher rate of decline was a couple of years ago, there was an apartment complex that switched from having section-eight housing to no longer accepting section-eight families. So that's assist, families on financial assistance. So we, we saw families move out of the places where they did not, no longer receive assistance. The live birth data, this is Zoe, so Doug, thanks for getting this. We hadn't updated it up until two thousand and thirteen. You see a slight spike in two thousand and fourteen, but we'll see. That's one to watch over time. That'd be good news, but right now, we're not seeing any benefit of that.
Wait, before you leave the chart, on the right is a legend, but I don't see that any of them have any relationship to it.
That's right. I, that was supposed to be deleted, and I did not delete it. So there's only one column, but you're right, it looks like there's missing data. We'll fix that before we repost.
Where are the other comment? I just wanted to clarify. The two thousand and twelve bar here is at least loosely correlated with the number of incoming kindergarteners. Is that, how to read this? Probably five years later. Right, so this year's...
Seventeen.
So, oh, so next year's... So, so this year's, it is two thousand and eleven. Okay.
And again, you know, this is a loose correlation. It's good trend data, you need to look at it over a very long period of time, because that's just the number of births where they move to between birth to five years old. But when you look at it over a long period of time, you can get some really longitudinal data, but to look at it even in that five-year time period doesn't help tremendously. Where it helps is if you're looking out over ten, twenty years to see. But needless to say, it is one of the data points we collect and monitor. This is a repeat from some of the other, technically, all four of our elementary schools are under capacity, but that's by state definition. That was prior to academic intervention services. And those were always, when state ed still does a capacity by classrooms, and, you know, you do need a space for occupational therapy, physical therapy, and it, the state calculation doesn't account for that. And certainly, when we've been tight, OT and PT happens on stages, in cafeterias, in hallways. Right now, we have dedicated space in all of our buildings to provide OT and PT and academic intervention services. The enrollment study, I'm debating. I don't know if it's premature to do the enrollment study. This year, we budgeted for it. Last year, we rolled it over. If we do an enrollment study, it has to be an enrollment study that looks at complete redistricting, because we can't, we can't look at anything unless you look at the number of spaces we have over total number of buildings and not associate it with any one particular building, because we're lopsided and our lines are all askew. So it would have to be not only an enrollment study, but a redistricting study. You would have to reconvene the committee... You would have to reconvene the committee the year the study is conducted. I will also add that since closing of High Park Elementary, we added five classes as a result of bringing back out-of-district special education classes. So again, from the point of the study, we've opened up more classes. We've had reports on that in the past. We always want to stay ahead of the curve, rumor control, economic forecast, housing market, private parochial enrollment, and doing what's best for our students. Doug and I toured the Hudson River Site property. Even when you look at all the plans, they're all to come to fruition in the next five to 10 years. They're looking at hotel and restaurant prior to talking about anything residential. The same holds true of the Bell Field. We've gone to several presentations about that development and it's all tourism-based. And while they all have a Part B residential.
It was small. It was small.
Small and Phase Two. And so you're really talking any residential out of any of those new developments would be really 10 years out. Unless, you know, again, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but this is what, what we're being told. They're very, they're all public meetings and it's all Part A, shops, restaurants, hotels. Part B, yeah, but you know, with the leftover land, we'll put residential. We always want to keep in mind that we value appropriate physical spaces to provide support and services for our students. We as a district are committed to not putting our music and physical education on a cart. We don't feel that our economic situation is so bad that we would squeeze our students so much that we have roving, traveling music, art, and PE teachers. Libraries in each school are not mandated. We still value libraries, so we're, you know, again, you have to put these things on the list because, you know, these are things that, you know, were options in other places. But these are things that we've identified through our process that we value. And some collaboration space for professional development and we certainly utilize this building. We utilize High Park Elementary School, so we have no shortage of professional space. Again, just some of the numbers, 2012 to 2013, that was an old number. This is just a rundown of some of the breakdown of the numbers. We're trying to be proactive and prepare for fluctuations, both minor and major. We haven't seen any major. We've seen a steady decline. The numbers from year to year don't always necessarily add up because as one year, some come back, some move forward. So you can't just add them up and it won't work that way.
Two comments, Greer. Is there any way of getting a similar type breakdown, at least maybe at the elementary, middle school, and high school for the surrounding districts? To see how we're tracking in relationship to those districts?
The rate of decreasing enrollment or?
Yeah, enrollments, whether they're decreasing or increasing.
Okay.
And to shed a little light possibly on if there is differences, the housing market availability in those areas based on some general breakdowns like between, I don't know, through 150,000 up to 400,000, above 400,000.
So some level of detail on housing markets and level of detail on the rate of enrollment in surrounding districts?
Yeah, I'm, you know, I'm interested in trying to understand there's specific local drivers that are driving it in a downward direction that may not be affecting other districts.
Okay, we can, we can certainly get some comparative data. I know that Deanna's somewhat hopeful that the new housing, student housing for Marist College students will free up some of the residential housing, but my experience with College Town is that the houses that are more residential will still have students and Marist will be able to fill up their student dorms, but, you know, speculation on my part and wishful thinking on her part. So we really don't know until we see whether or not the dorms that are built at Marist fill up and still have overflow to fill all those houses that are occupied now by three or four students sharing a house in the Violet Avenue area.
Just as a comment on that, there was, I was in, part of a conversation last week where it was pointed out that in addition to the actual expansion of Marist-owned housing, there are college dorm-type housing that are going to be opening up. They would not be college-specific. In other words, there's a market, somebody's trying to take advantage of the college market here and offering housing to any college that wants to come and use those facilities and market them and rent them out as if it were college housing. And Marist is staying away from it because the buildings are frame-constructed, not concrete-constructed. But I'm assuming by, because of that, the housing would be cheaper in this new, new commodity being offered.
Yeah. And the president of Ulster Community College was sharing with me that they use students to Duchess Community College because they're, if you're in the Highland-Marlborough corridor, it's closer and more convenient to come over to Duchess. And now Duchess is start, Duchess Community College is starting with dorms and housing. So he's losing students to Duchess Community College, so it, we're surrounded by colleges and the students are looking for housing. And Steve, do you know?
Yeah, I was wondering what the, the current total occupancy of our elementary schools are relative to the theoretical maximum occupancy?
I would have to write a posted note right down right now to, so the theoretical meaning, you know, there's X amount of classroom space, you should be able to hold this amount of students and what we actually have.
Right. I mean, I understand that the theoretical max means music on a cart, no, no room for AP or deputy and so forth. I'm just trying to get a, a number that I can, I can hold in mind year to year and, you know, basically say we're some, some percentage occupied.
Right.
And, you know, across all of our elementary schools.
And to your point, theoretical maximum occupancy includes space for library, music, and phys ed, and art, but it doesn't for OT, PT, and academic intervention services. But it would be inclusive of art, music.
Why would you?
No, I don't include that though, since we as a district are committed to providing those services to our kids and that, that having separate facilities for those would be the, education is the best, the best product for our kids.
Yeah. If I use the state ed formula, they're going, we'll have, we'll come up with, are we at maximum occupant, where are we on the continuum of maximum occupancy with the assumption of art, music, and phys ed in classrooms? I mean, we could extract that, but we can also just include that in and say, where are we with maximum, maximum occupancy, knowing that that includes an art room and a music room?
The significance of those numbers would be much more valuable to me, understanding that we're not in a position of trying to jury-rig music, art, occupational therapy, physical therapy, that we're talking about how we as a district look at a school building, particularly at the elementary level.
Yeah. I would, to use the formula, I would have to use the formula that has no space for OT, PT, and academic intervention services, but with space for art, music, phys ed.
I think it makes sense to use the standard definition as defined by the state, but I don't think it's a good idea to interpret it in a vacuum. In other words, I think we, we need to look at the number and then say, oh, and by the way, we still need room for these other services that we provide. But I, I see why you're using the standard.
And that's what an enrollment study would do. I mean, you know, that, that's exactly what they do. They, they take the state standard and then they break it down and say, yeah, but that, you know, so, I mean, I mean, I guess that's the question of the day. Do we do a study or do we just keep a close eye on it, come up with some more monitoring indicators, find out what the housing market is?
Well, one, one thing that I would.
The study causes panic, the monitoring doesn't.
Yeah, the thing that I would encourage us to do is try to, try to set some thresholds now so that it's not a, not a panicky, you know, not a, not an emotional environment where we're trying to make decisions about whether, whether to even start to consider the study.
Well, I'll give you an example of, of threshold and, you know, again, we can spend some time and I can come back at some point this year. If we don't want to do a full study, I can come back in a couple of months and we can revisit this. If we do a study, we say we're going to do a study and let this study happen. But in Netherwood and Violet Avenue, one, one threshold utilized is what we call how deep is the school? And when you are at too deep and declining, that's a pretty strong indicator. So I'll explain what I mean by too deep. At each grade level, you have sections. So at, let's just say at Violet Avenue, you have kindergarten and you only have two kindergarten class. You have Ms. Rice, you have Ms. Smith. So, let's pull the name out of a hat that we have to be sitting, she doesn't teach kindergarten. Anyway, so if you only have two classes per section, you're called too deep. If you have three, you have Ms. Rice, Ms. Smith, Ms. Jones, you're three deep. Our elementary schools have been three deep, four deep at any given time. I'm not sure we really went to five at any time in the elementary school. We have two elementary schools right now, Netherwood and Violet Avenue, that are too deep at every grade level. And those classes are getting smaller and smaller. So one of the things that happened when no one was doing, looking at enrollment and then the economy hit, was when we had High Park Elementary, we had a too-deep school and what we kept doing was we kept a too-deep school to the point where you had 11 kids in one class, 12 in some sections. And it wasn't by design that we said, you know what, philosophically, we're going to do an experiment and we're going to have one elementary school, we're going to have 10 kids per class. It wasn't by design, it just happened. And that is starting to happen at Netherwood and Violet Avenue where the sections are getting smaller and smaller. So we're still keeping it too deep, but those schools, the class size is getting smaller and smaller. Not by design, not by educational commitment, but because of declining enrollment. If you get to the point where you've got, you, you have to make a decision, are we getting close enough where it's really a one-deep? And a one-deep, you don't keep an entire school building open. At one-deep, if any one of those buildings gets close to one-deep per grade level, we know we can accommodate them. So the numbers to watch, that's one threshold. How close are we getting to one-deep at any particular grade level or, or building? So maybe an interim report could be how many sections in each building and how many students in each of the classes in that section? We're precariously moving in that direction. I'm not being an alarmist, but with two, two, Violet Avenue lost 81 children from 2013 to 2016 and Netherwood lost 61 from 2013 to 2016. You're talking a three-year period of time, 81 students at Violet, 61 at Netherwood. We are now looking at small class sizes in a too-deep school in two of our schools. That's our status. So we can do, we can explore a couple of questions, look at it mid-year, and then I would say this is the last year we could say monitor and then you'd have to gear up to 17, 18, doing a full-blown study.
That sounds like a good plan to me.
So a mid-year update? Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you. At this time, I have a motion to enter public participation.
Stumble.
Second.
Any discussion on paper? Thank you. If anybody would like to adjust the board, you step up to the mic. I've been here a long time, so get to it.
Good evening, Steve Hughes, District President. My first question is whether the district health insurance covers volunteers.
Yes, it does. Oh, health insurance? Liability, yes.
Actually, I'm up here because there's a few things on the personnel agenda that are relatively noteworthy. The first being Ms. Kafka's promotion to deputy superintendent. Being on the board when she was hired into the district, I realized what a valuable contribution she was. We're all very lucky, lucky that she's chosen to make High Park her home. This is, I think, the third significant role that you've played in the district and I just expect great things, so thank you very much. The second, the second two, next two relate to the technology department. Those of us that had an affinity for technology were somewhat concerned when Forrest Datter left. Well, probably the best thing he did was to build this solid technology department and I'd like to recognize Thereska Kenner's promotion. She probably was the lead in providing continuity between Forrest and Rick Wirth and the district is also very lucky to have her. And then finally, Robert Calvano was being hired by the district and Bobby has been my main liaison to the technology department as the volunteer camera operator. And he's always been very friendly, very accommodating, and I appreciate when he steps in to cover for me when I can't be here. So congratulations to all three. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Would anybody else like to adjust the board? May I motion to exit public participation?
Stumble.
Second.
Only one paper? Vote? Thank you. I don't need, I don't need a quick question. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, do we get to?
Oh, oh.
Comment on Mr. Hughes' comments?
I was going to say momentarily, an actual poll.
First of all, we should acknowledge that Mr. Hughes had some excellent points there, both in Aviva's contributions to the district. It's a real pleasure to work with her. We hope she continues to make those kind of contributions. And I've been able to watch Theres, I can't say I've worked with her, but I've been able to watch and another point well taken. This is a well-deserved promotion.
All right, we can get into the whole thing. Actually, I already decided that Bobby's a full-time employee now. So, not that Bobby.
Oh, he's not excited.
It's a, really a big win for the district for to have him as a full-time. I agree with that and everything else that Steve said. Oh, anybody else have any other comments? I'm sorry, I didn't hear your chant.
Are we going to wait till we get to personnel or should we do it all now?
We'll switch.
Okay.
All right. Anybody on the board, discussion? I didn't, I don't have any questions, but I don't think there's anything there. May I have a motion for 15.01? Which one generally?
Stumble.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah. I'd just like to acknowledge that Amanda Rice is with us tonight. She was with us. She was with us last year in, I'm going to see where she left from. She was at the high school as a teaching assistant. It was basically a year-long interview, and she was unanimously selected to be a math teacher at Havlin Middle School, so congratulations. I would like to say we didn't get a chance to clap for James Pineda tonight, though. I think that's noteworthy.
Something else I'd like to draw attention to under donations, the Claudio Capolo Mural and Peter Room, in the amount of $22,000. Just wanted to highlight them.
Very young.
Yeah.
And for those who are here that may not have seen it, we actually, they came to our last board meeting, and we presented them with a certificate and had a chance to publicly thank them, so just in case people missed it, we, we did really invite them and to be part of the celebration of that, so.
Any other discussion? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. Motion for 17.01, special education placement.
Submove, second.
Any discussion?
I've reviewed the packet and recommend this adoption is presented, and it's down to the wire, and we're going to make it, I think.
Yeah.
I mentioned that because one of the two special education placements is 40 pages long. So somebody's been very busy lately, late in the season.
That's finalizing.
On favor?
I'm sorry, I think we should clarify, what Aviva said is it's finalizing. We didn't squeeze 40 pages with review of meetings at the end of the school year. It's just that we, we carried the meetings through at a very significant pace to get it done, but that left the coordinators with a massive amount of paperwork to finalize before those programs could be adopted. So the students weren't getting convenience, and the teachers are going to have the information to need before the school year, and the students know what's going on for next year now.
Thank you. On favor? Opposed? And a motion for 17.02, budget transfers, as listed in the agenda.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. And a motion for 17.03, superintendent's contract, as listed in the agenda.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? Opposed? Thank you.
Doug, I just wanted to take this opportunity to talk about how good a job Dr. Recheck is doing.
Absolutely.
Really pleased that she's continued to work so hard for us.
And I'm going to hold you to the original statement that you would see at least one entire class go through the school history.
Graduating early. Year seven.
Okay, where are we related on that? I have a motion for 17.04, memorandum agreement with the Hyde Park Administrative Association, as listed in the, in the, in the agenda.
Submove, second.
Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 17.05, smart school investment plan, as listed in the agenda.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? With on favor? Opposed?
Clear.
I have a motion for 17.06, license and use agreement from the Culinary Institute, as listed in the agenda, for the pool, right?
In exchange for soccer field time.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that?
Just, just look, the point, what is happening here is we are exchanging time on our athletic facilities for the interscholastic, well, it's, it's a division-type program at, at Culinary Institute, they have a soccer team at the college level. They're going to be using our facilities in about an equal proportion and allowing us to use their pool, which has been a, a great problem, continuing long-time issues where our teams would practice and keep it going. So it's, it's a win-win situation for everybody, but it does highlight the community spirit of these businesses and schools in this area. We've talked for years about the types of benefits we get from Maris College and from Vassar College and from Duchess Community College in terms of providing mentors and programs that help our students and providing services for our kids. As we pointed out earlier today, we had a student that actually got his two-degree certificate, two-year certificate from Duchess Community College through their cooperation, I'm sure, and their, their efforts to line it up with what he was doing here at the high school. An amazing achievement that's benefited our kids and set a standard I'm sure that other students are going to look at, so continue to be strong community involvement around, around the area, between Hyde Park and the other colleges and areas, and it's been a real benefit to our students.
I don't think we would have, on favor? Opposed? Thank you. And a motion for 17.07, the agreement for employee assistance program with the workplace, as listed?
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? Here?
No.
On favor?
I want to talk, me. I don't, I don't raise my hand and talk, I just start talking.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you. I have a motion for 17.08, the K agreement, as listed in the agenda.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 17.09, school works agreement with the ARC of Duchess County.
Submove, second.
What is the ARC of Duchess County?
I'm sorry, it's ARC.
It's something other than Bosse's?
It's, yes, it's also a nonprofit.
Okay.
But it's not Bosse's. I don't know if to talk to him about it.
On favor? Opposed? Thank you. And a motion for 17.10, memorandum agreement with the St. James Turean Incorporated, as listed?
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 17.11, agreement for retiree Cobra building.
Submove.
I have a second one.
Second.
Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. I have a motion for 17.12, memorandum, memorandum of agreement with the HPUE, as listed?
Submove, second.
Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. Back to public participation. I have a motion to re-enter public participation.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? I'm now back in public participation. Anybody who wants to address the board? Please. I have a motion, I have a motion to exit public participation.
Submove, second.
Any discussion on that? On favor? Opposed? Thank you. There are no other matters that I, I don't think, anybody have any other items? So, moving on to personal community reports. We haven't had any, no, all right. Coming meetings and events. Well, the next Board of Education meeting will be held on Thursday, August 25th, right here, at 6:00 PM. There's no need for another executive session. I have a motion to adjourn.
Submove, second.
We got a quick response to that. Any discussion? On favor? Opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.